United States of America and into your republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Everyone. So to start off on our agenda, we have the VON fund. And I suggest, and Barbara, can you be honest if I'm going to break rules with this, that we jump ahead a little bit in our agenda and cover reports and correspondence. Because Christie is joining us and you have her evening back. And then also, I know we have Joe in the chief here for new business number one. Does anyone have any concerns with bumping those up?
If you need a motion, I'd love to do that.
Please.
We'll delay the VON fund meeting until we hear from Christie Rabasca for the MS four stormwater update. And also new business number one, the IRPA funds.
Good motion, second all else in favor, say aye. Everyone. All right. So Christie, can you hear us on Zoom?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me?
Yes, you can hear you. I don't know if you were wanting us to see you.
I just started my video. I'm not sure what it's doing. Let me try that again. Haven't had that problem before. Well, I'm going to share my screen, so you'll be looking at my slides instead. So maybe the video will kick in here in a minute. Let's see. And it does say disabled screen sharing. Sorry, I saw the button, thought I was going to be okay.
We can see you now.
Able screen sharing. We can see. Wait. That's Barbara's screen.
See, you give these kind of jobs to them. Texa, it unsound.
Barbara, in the top thing where there's pictures in the top right corner, the little the square within square in the top right of that box.
Somebody got to be building with this tonight. You can fix me.
Step one.
There we go. Thank you. All right, we can see your screen now, Christie, and we can see you.
Excellent. Thank you so much for having me. For those of you who who don't know me, I'm Christie Rabasca, and I'm a regional contractor for the Southern Maine Stormwater Working Group. Those are the five communities that you see listed on your screen, South Berwick included. And my contract is with Southern Maine Planning and Development Commission. And I help these five communities implement the stormwater permit. So the stormwater permit, oops, it's not. Wait a second, see if it's going to advance for me. Here we go. The stormwater permit that I'm talking about, it's a Clean Water Act permit. And it is designed to minimize stormwater pollutants from getting picked up off of impervious surfaces, things like breakdust, litter, pet waste, oil and grease, food waste, you know, errant food waste. And it, the permit, the five communities are required to minimize those stormwater pollutants so that they don't end up in the storm drain and out in the natural resources where they basically will go untreated. This Clean Water Act permit is administered by the Maine Department of Environmental Protection. They issue the permits every five years and they do all the enforcement. The name of the permit, it's a, it's a general permit for stormwater discharges and from municipal separate storm sewer systems. So because of the M and the four Ss, we call it the MS four general permit. And there are almost 7,000 communities in the United States that are regulated by this permit. And here in Maine, there are 30 communities that are regulated. And we call it a general permit because all 30 communities are required to do the same kinds of things. So we all have one permit and then we all kind of adopt it and figure out how we're going to implement that on, on the boots on the ground in our communities. The transportation agencies and state and federal agencies, like the university systems, they also have a general permit for stormwater that's a little bit different than ours. But the municipalities are the 30 municipalities here in Maine, we all try to work together. And we do that in a couple of different ways. So as I said before, I'm the contractor for the Southern Maine Stormwater Working Group, which is our five communities down here along the coast. The Portland area is organized into 14 communities. They call themselves the Interlocal Stormwater Working Group. There's the Bangor Area Stormwater Working Group, and then the Andrews-Coggan Valley, Lewis and Auburn-Sibatus, they're organized. So each, each of these groups, we've kind of formed for cost-saving measures, the permit has a lot of different diverse requirements. And so there are a lot of them that we can work together as communities on, and even on a state level, the four groups do get together and try to, try to work together on occasion. We have a big meeting coming up on Friday that the state regulatory agency is going to attend and give us all the same information at the same time. So some good efficiencies there. So the Maine DEP issues these permits every five years. The permits became effective in the state of Maine back in 2003. So those first few were issued right on time over a five-year period. And we are just finishing up permit year nine of this permit cycle. It has taken quite a while to get the new stormwater permit in effect. And I had provided a letter to the council describing some of the issues that came up. There was an appeal and that got resolved finally in November of 2021. And, and so this new permit that we're operating under is going to begin July 1 of 2022, so just July 1 of this year. And but all the while, for the last year or so, I've been working with Jay Reddy Marker and Amy Egger and Jennifer Janelle to review what the permit requirements are going to be and write a five-year plan to comply with that permit. So that that plan is about 90% complete, but we have just like one more small update to do based on those changes that came through in November. And so that's some of the stuff I'll talk about tonight, as I give you the update as to what this new permit is going to look like for you. So the stormwater general permit hits just about every area of municipal operations. Joe Saul and I have worked together since 2003, just a couple of us that have have worked since the permit actually became effective in the state of Maine. And so these new, a lot of these new permit requirements are the same as they have been in the prior permits. So there's an annual street sweeping requirement, which the town Public Works does a great job with that. There are catch basin evaluations and cleaning requirements. And we have been training Public Works on the iPad. So they go around and collect data on how much sediment is in each of the catch basins, make determinations as to which ones need to be cleaned. They have to do that on a two-year cycle, make sure every basin gets looked at every two years. And then cleaned if the sump has a lot of sediment in it so that that sediment doesn't get washed out into the water bodies. There are a number of outfall and ditch inspections. All outfalls and ditches have to be inspected at least once in a permit cycle, actually in a five-year period. So we're on our second round for this permit, permit cycle. And you know, the Public Works Department has to make sure that the system is in good condition so that there aren't any failures, there aren't any collapses. And they have to know where the system is. We have a stormwater map on the iPad. And so Public Works is pretty adept at getting those things updated. So a lot of these things haven't changed in the permit, which is good. They're working well. It's, it's good for the municipality to know what they have for infrastructure and where it is. It's nice for the Public Works Department to be able to access that on the iPad. So just a couple of things that are different regarding the permit. There are public education and outreach requirements and public involvement and participation. And under the old permit, under the prior permit, we'll be finishing up just one more yardscaping workshop this spring. It'll be offered through Marshwood Adult Ed via Zoom. I actually give those for the five communities. I do those workshops. So feel free to join us. That's the next one's on April 5. So if you just Google the yardscaping, search for it on the Marshwood Adult Ed, you'll see that presentation coming. It's just one hour. And then Marshwood does charge a $15 fee for that. So we'll be finishing up that public education program that is designed to minimize the discharge of nutrients from fertilizer and pesticides into the water bodies. And we're going to be turning our attention, the five communities, we spent a lot of time talking about what the what water quality issues we might want to try to tackle over the next five-year period. And the communities decided to focus on pet waste and litter cleanups and cigarette butt waste. So we've been doing some baseline evaluations around that. And beginning next year, we will start to help the conservation commissions in their cleanup efforts. And we've got a pretty nifty new program that actually tracks the litter as it gets picked up. So we'll get some real metrics on what kind of litter is out there and and then how much we're helping to take care of. And then more so, I think, one of the reasons I wanted to come and give you an update is that there are two new ordinances, ordinance requirements coming up as a result of this, these new, this new permit that's going to become effective. The, the first one is related to erosion and sediment control. And the second. So the first one is we're going to have to open up the the ordinances to embed some very specific erosion and sediment control performance standards into the municipal code. And so Amy Egger and I have a planning board meeting set up for April 20th to introduce that to the planning board. And those ordinance changes don't need to be finalized until June 30th of 2023. But we just wanted to make you aware that we're going to be working on that for a while. And then you'll probably see those ordinance changes coming through in the fall and winter.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Or then things you just spoke to, are those like relatively straightforward ordinance changes or I'm just trying to gauge like effort level, I guess, by the planning board.
Yeah, that's a good, that's a good question. There are going to be three different options that they have to make those changes. I think those are going to be the simpler of the two sets of ordinance changes. And they can probably get those done in a couple of meetings. We have, there's a model erosion sediment control ordinance that we've been, that we worked on for over a year. So that's one of their options for adoption. They can just adopt the model ordinance, but then they're going to have to go through the code and just make sure that everything points to the new erosion sediment control model chapter. So that's one way they can do it. And there's another way they can do it by reference, or we can just kind of go like if we want to slog through the code line by line and adjust, you know, each and every section, we can do that and embed the ordinances directly. But we'll be presenting those three options to them and letting them make the decision about how much time they have and and how they want to do it. So the second, the second set of ordinances relates to the, the reason that the permit took so long to get finalized. The second set of ordinance changes is going to be, it's a requirement to embed performance standards that are related to low impact development. And that's low impact development means a lot of different things to a lot of different people. There are a lot of different definitions going around. And so we have formed a model LID ordinance committee on a statewide level. It's one of the ways the four organizations, all 30 communities are working to try to develop this LID ordinance. And so we've been working on that for a few months now. And we plan on having a model LID ordinance available in June of this year for the, and then it has to go through quite a bit of public process before it can even go to a planning board. The Maine DEP is going to have to review it for the required elements, give its approval, send it out for public comment, address any comments, and then that model ordinance won't be available for a planning board to even consider until November of this year. So we'll probably be doing our planning board introductions on that model ordinance in January of next year. And then we have, you know, a whole year and a half to get that piece finalized. So if I thought, I know I've gotten questions before, you know, just reiterate, what is low impact development? So I don't have a good slide on it, but I'll just take a minute to, you know, you guys can close your eyes and visualize a nice green field, an undeveloped parcel of land in the town that has, you know, some trees and some meadow and you know, when it rains, a lot of that water is going to infiltrate into the ground. It's going to hang up on the leaves, evaporate, and you know, a little bit of it's going to run off and maybe into ditches nearby or streams. Or if it's close to, you know, Great, Great Works River, Salmon Falls, it may run off directly into the river. But that's, that's what, you know, parcel of land looks like undeveloped. That's the hydrology of it. And when you go in and you start adding the impervious surfaces, you really change that hydrology if you're not very careful about it. And if you don't impose these low impact development performance standards on it. So the whole idea is that by the time you've added some roof and some parking lot and some driveways and sidewalks, that those raindrops that that used to hit that nice undeveloped piece of land, they're going to react pretty much the same way. They're going to evaporate, they're going to infiltrate, and they're going to run off. So you're going to have to kind of carve that site up a little bit and provide small treatment systems all around it to, to make sure that the post-development hydrology is the same as the pre-development hydrology. Exactly the way the design engineers do that is kind of an art form and a difficult thing to put into standards. And so that is one of the reasons we have quite a bit of time to pull this together. So I think we're doing a good job, though. I think the ordinance committees made good progress and I think we will come up with some nice performance standards that will truly benefit water quality, but not be too onerous on the development community. Balance we're trying to strike. Any questions on that set of changes?
Christie, Jeff Minihan, just had a question. You mentioned public hearing. Would be, you would go through a public hearing. Where would that public hearing be? You weren't talking about our planning board, correct? You were talking about through the DEP?
Yes, first, this model ordinance and these performance standards, they're going to go to the DEP on September 1. And both Amy Egger and Abby Sherwin are attending the ordinance committee meetings. So, and there are a lot of planners around the state that are also attending these meetings and watching very closely what this model ordinance is going to look like. So when that, when that model ordinance gets submitted to the DEP on September 1, they're going to send it out for public comment. And then finalize the required elements by November 1 of 2020.
Excellent. Thank you.
2022, yeah.
I would think like to having the finalized ordinance is specific for South Berwick. We'll have to go through our own normal public hearing cycle.
Correct. Yeah, you have, you'll have another year and a half to do that on the town side.
But there's also double way that public could actually take part in by watching the DEP one and then ours. So thank you.
Yes, yes. So really, the last set of, there were quite a few changes in the new permit related to impaired waters. And South Berwick actually has a very good surface water quality. So most of the impaired waters requirements don't apply to the, to the town. And that's true of most of Southern Maine. Although I do have to say that we are watching carefully. There are some new nitrogen requirements coming up that may impact the Salmon Falls River and the Piscataqua Estuary. So not, they're, they're not going to impact us for this five-year permit, but there may be some work that we want to do preemptively to make sure that new impairment requirements don't affect the town in the next permit cycle. So we try to talk about that at our regional meetings and make sure that the technical experts in town understand what's going on there.
Christie, Jack Corrigus. The Great Works River. It's anecdotal to me. I don't have studies or reports or anything like that, but it was commonly held that after a big rain event, particularly an event that would say wash out the flood mill plane, that it was advised not to necessarily have water contact activities in these mill pond because that flips over real fast and that there would be potentially harmful constituents that would be there until the pond flipped again. Do you have any information on that?
I have some information on that. The, the DEP just came out with their new 303D list, their impaired waters list. And so they're not planning on taking any specific action regards to those impairments except for the work we have to do under this general permit, which is, you know, part of our public education program. The inspection work that the Public Works Department does, making sure there's no erosion. Construction sites aren't affecting the river. So beyond what the permit has to do, there are, there are any other specific requirements that I see coming down the pike for that.
Did you, sorry, Christie, am I jumping ahead? Are you?
No, that was it. I'm, I'm mostly done. I was going to offer questions and yeah, see what else people had.
The only thing I have, this is Jack again, and I would hope that when the new LID requirements come down the pike here, that there would be a comparative effort to see what we already have in the books. Sometimes when things come out of the state, there's a point of view, we did it with our stormwater ordinance seven years ago, where we had, well, in Shoreland as well. We had stuff in the books, so we were required to create new ordinances because that was the state model, even though we have it already in zoning ordinance. So I would just hope that, that whatever we end up with is comparative to see what we already have in the books in terms of things like post, pre and post runoff, post development runoff, and that we, we don't reinvent the wheel and undermine what we already have.
Yep, that is, that's part of what Amy and I are going to be doing.
So Christie, it sounds like as far as like next steps specifically for the town, it's really the involvement from the planning board as far as these ordinance changes. And then obviously, you know, if anyone wants to weigh in on the DEP public hearings, but is there anything else outstanding that you need or anticipate from us?
No, I think that's it. I will have to update that five-year stormwater plan. So I'll be reaching out to Tim for an additional signature on that. And I think that if the council wanted to take a look at, you know, we do have a good analysis, it's a little too dense for us to talk about here. But, you know, we did, we did dive into the ordinances to see what you have on the books already for post-construction, and we'll be updating that as part of this. So the council wants to take a look at that, they can. But Tim and, and Amy and I will be working on that and Abby Sherwin, so.
Yeah, just, this is more of a budgetary question. It seems a reality that we're going to be spending more and more money on stormwater as the years go on. And is there anything that you see coming down the pike with respect to the health of the estuary? And any impact that South Berwick may offer towards that, that would result in increased spending to, to attain compliance?
I, there's going to be a meeting in April on these new nitrogen standards that we're keeping an eye on. So I, I, I do want to make sure that, that those are reasonable and appropriate before they go into effect. And I think the other, the other things to keep an eye on are that both our, their our neighbors to the west and south Massachusetts and New Hampshire, they have many communities that are also regulated under this program, this MS four program. And, and they're being required to evaluate all of their municipal facilities and retrofit them with green infrastructure wherever they can. So there's some capital expenditures there related to like low impact development that the, basically that the town would have to, would have to implement. So those are going to be at least five years out, those kinds of requirements coming down. But so for the next five years, I think you're going to be pretty, pretty steady.
Christie, thank you so much for joining us this evening. This is great. Christie, thank you so much for joining us this evening. This is a great update and. Yeah, I'm glad that the planning boards in the loop on this stuff are will be.
Thank you for your time. I appreciate it. And thank you for bumping me up. That was very nice. So. I do want to hear what Joe has to say about the ARPU, so I'm going to stay on.
Thank you.
All right, we just had the one report and correspondence. I will jump now to new business number one, ARPU funds expenditures.
Madam Chair, members of the council. Good evening. So what this is, we put this together, as you know, we received seven hundred ninety-eight thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars of. They call them Opera Funds, the COVID money, replacement money. Really, US Department of Treasury. For the coronavirus state local fiscal recovery funds is what they're actually called. Specific guidelines of how we could spend that money. So. As time went on, we've been watching myself and Jen. Attended seven several webinars to determine what we could use the money for. There will be three audits. The first one Jen just got notified. I think you did that today, which we knew was coming. The audit clearly identifies how we got to extend the funds and how we. Excuse me, identified that we expended those funds. Very tight window with the audit. So basically, those funds. Broken up by the final ruling of the US Department of Treasury said we could do. Replace lost public sector revenue. Responding to any public health emergency. Assistance to households, small businesses, nonprofits. Public sector capacity, we could do public safety. Public health and human services staffing. Government employment, rehiring, public sector staffing. Effective service delivery, capital expenditures. Premium pay for employees, water and sewer infrastructure, broadband infrastructure. Those are the categories. That's it. That's all we could spend this money. They did release some changes. In the final ruling. They added a an effective piece that said, basically. What they were going to do is group it under. Ten million dollar fund, anything under ten million. To spend on what they call government services, government services, anything in municipal government or state government that you could think of. What that means is if if we got funding under ten million. We'll have instead of our audit being specifically. Line item by line item, specific questions, it's just going to be a box of Jen fills basically types in. Because we spent the money on all this, so they're going to take that. To help so that everybody didn't have to go through this process of painfully identifying. With that said. Myself and Jen took this and applied the seven hundred ninety-eight eighty, which you'd spend. Hundred fifty-six thousand three hundred on premium pay for employees. We took remaining balance and applied it to the twenty-two, twenty-three budget. It's very specific. We can't use to offset taxes, but we could use it to. Supplement what we wanted or needed for. Going forward, as long as we can justify. In that amount that you have in front of you, what myself and Jen came up with. There's four thousand eighty dollars for computers, security increase program for ourselves here. Which was brought up by the council. The second item and our last, the police chief, Chief Ruger and Chief Rossell is here, the fire. To both talk about their what they asked for. Body cameras for the police department, which would be a capital. Expenditure which will replace. The radio repeaters for the police department and fire department, so we can talk to Sanford. A police car equipped would go in line with a new police officer's position. A new portable radios for the police department, so they can communicate when they're out of their cars. And all new breathing air packs for the fire service for the for the fire department. So. That said, I'd ask. Chief Rossell, could you talk about the air packs minute and kind of give the council what they are? Life expectancy and replacement plan.
Right, basically. Air packs are for our protection when we go into fires or any kind of hazardous spill or whatever. They're over twenty-two years old. They're due for replacement. We've we've upgraded them at least once already. And, you know, this ARC money would take care of. Replacing them without impacting the budget per se. You know, the increase on the taxes, stuff like that. It comes up to about hundred ninety-six thousand dollars. We're faced, we're going to lose thirty thousand in April because it won't up fifteen percent. But anyway, we can work around that. We're in the process, hopefully, to replace a fire truck. To get rid of a nineteen ninety-six. Truck that we have. It's due, you know, it's over the twenty-five years and it's due for replacement. This would offset some of the cost also for that because it would be forty-five thousand dollars to put air packs on that truck. We've also, and so that way. With the air packs, replacing the bottles. Taking air, you know, air masks. And having spare bottles for each pack and stuff like that, unfortunately, it comes up to a hundred ninety-six thousand dollars.
Chief, can you tell the council how much on the packs individually and what it?
The individual packs are six thousand. Six thousand, six thousand five hundred eighty-seven dollars just for the pack. The bottles are a thousand two hundred and something dollars. Then you got your mask or three hundred dollars. Then you. Then the spare bottles are, you know, like I said, to have a pack for each seat on the fire truck because. We used to have just the packs for the guys that rode in the back and stuff like that. Well, the problem is. If the driver pulls up to a scene. And it's a hazardous situation, he's not protected. So having a having a pack each seat on the truck. Is protection for everyone.
That's a federal requirement too.
And and so that would make that, that's why there's going to be twenty-four instead of the twenty that we have now.
And how many years do we get out of these?
It'd be twenty. It'd be twenty years.
Good. Thank you, Chief.
Thanks, sir.
So the next items that I'd like to is. The police chief that's here, I'd like to have Chief Ruger talk about the items he's. Who we're going to talk to and to the budget chief.
Good evening. For body cameras, the best thing I could, the best way I can explain it is. Is a picture, you know, says a thousand words. What's a video going to do? The video can can do ten thousand, a million words. When we go to a scene, not only now with it are the DA's office going to be able to see what's happening through the eyes of the officer. But they're going to be able, you know, the demeanor of the suspects, the victims, you know, whether or not they're crying, whatever. It's very hard to describe that when you're trying to write a report. I mean, you could write a fifteen-page report, but then they won't read it because it's too long. So I want to be able to write videos. This also will protect our officers from any kind of unwarranted kind of. Discretions that they may that people say they may have done. We've had a few because we do have watch guards in our cars right now. But they only do audio once we walk away from the car, so you can only hear what's going on. Those are used for mostly for motor vehicle stops or O U Ys or drunk drivers. The body cameras themselves is once they leave the vehicle, everything will be recorded and also will also turn on the watch guard as well once they activate it. They they work. With each other. So every single one of those will actually download the videos and will submit it to the DA's office. And it'll hopefully help us get some more convictions because right now the DA's office is having some problems. Talk about the repeaters. Repeaters are over ten years old. We just had to repair them. We couldn't even talk to Sanford other than in the downtown area.
Can you tell the council what the repeaters do, what they are?
So what the repeaters are, it's a it's a radio signal. It's it's on top of the hill. First, we have one in back of the PD as well. So they'll hit whichever one's closer. Plus, we also bounce it off of Burwick if we're on Route Four. Whichever one we use closer, then it sends the signal that we transmit up to the Sanford Communications Center so they can hear us clearly. We just had that problem where our portals, we couldn't, they couldn't hear us anywhere. And so we did get that repaired for now, but. The expense of what it's going to be to repair it or to get a new one is going to be better off if we get new ones that'll last, you know, ten plus years. That's about the average lifespan of a repeater. Next one on the list was a police car equipped. As you guys know, we've been trying to get a detective sergeant now for the past many years, three years now. I am just hired one person. I hired, I have another one coming on board here soon. We're finally going to get to a point where we're probably going to be fully staffed. And I'm finally going to be able to get a detective sergeant with that. He's going to need a car and it won't be. We don't want it to look like a regular police car. This will be something that maybe a Nissan Rogue or or something about effect that can do surveillance in it without being noticed.
Just saw your mind.
I was going to steal the electric.
Cancel when you retire.
Portable radios, they just go to their fingers. They just wear it after time. The the average radio portable radio comes out at five watts. And by the end of their life cycle, they could be down to two and a half. And that's so you want, I want to make sure that my guys are safe out there. And so that they can reach Sanford and get the help that they need. Oh, and the last thing was new police officer. That one. We all know we have complaints of the speeders and we have people, you know, the stop sign violations. And my goal for the future here. Is going to have you have a start of traffic division. With this, I want I want to take this new officer and put him as a start of the new traffic division. So he's going to have some part-time as a work underneath him. And what they'll do is they're going to be doing traffic only. They will assist guys if there's if there's a problem, you know, if they have a, if they need a second officer. But their primary goal is going to be out there and stop cars. And let's quell what's going on in this town right now. With the speeders there, as you know, we have a work community down. We have how many thousands of cars, twenty thousand cars that they're ever going to. And with that, we get a lot of complaints because they're all trying to go around the side streets. So let's get out there and let's try to to quell some of this and get some blue lights going.
But thank you, Chief. Any questions for the chief or? So. Thank you, guys. I'm awesome. Last two items on there, we met with the. Sewer, sewer district and water district. We asked them for capital projects. I think the one of them gave us about seven hundred thousand, the other one was over a million dollars.
Yes, they had a big wish list.
You know, so I checked with other communities to see what other communities were doing. A lot of other communities handled it. They've just decided to give a lump sum to the sewer and water. So I met with. The sewer district and water district representatives. And explained to them that, you know, what we're doing with our money. And asked if they felt that we gifted them each a hundred twenty-five thousand for whatever projects they wanted to apply them to. They'll have to give us the audit's information. They're going to show us what it's being used for. They're very happy with that. They said, fine, they take that. Well, that leaves us if we. If we were to spend this money. Some of it's time sensitive, the air packs are time sensitive. We're to spend that money and apply this to the budget. Which is where the budget's coming in at. This will leave us a hundred and twenty dollars a lot more. So. And everybody, you know, we did the payroll hazard. The hazard pay. We've got, you know, a huge piece for us is our, we have the lowest level of security computer protection right now. We need to get that up. So. We would buy that. And then the remaining items that you see on the list. So. Jen, anything you want to add?
No, no.
So this, this is. You would need to approve to spend this to coincide with approving the budget later on. So.
So do you need us to make a motion on this this evening or do we wait to?
You can do either or, but the the air packs are time sensitive.
Okay.
I I have to, I have to order them by, I'd have to order them by April first to get the discount. I thought it's going to cost us additional.
Let's do it tonight.
You know, extra money. So, I mean, I, this is going to go one way or the other for the budget. So. If not, then I have to reconstruct the budget because I applied these numbers to the budget. I I will answer any questions, take any thoughts or ideas. We we worked very hard and I want to thank Jen for all she's done both previously before I got here. And up till now. And I also want to thank all the staff in Water and Sewer District. For giving me their inputs, their ideas, working with all of the numbers. There was a lot of research because we had to get all the numbers. Everybody did their parts and we're here tonight to do this. So. Certainly, I'll answer any question you folks have.
And, Chair. Yeah, I I just, and thank you very much for the introduction where you mentioned the audit process. I have no problem. With the proposed expenditures. I just want to make sure I haven't dealt with many government grants before. And to make sure that the. That this passes all the the tests and. And so the money is being correctly applied. That's the only hesitancy that I would have because it's. Seems like we're. If we could get a review by somebody to say, yeah, you're good, that would make me feel great. But that's not happening until we get the first R.
Yes, and that's not due until April thirtieth.
Yes.
I have a guidance right here.
Yes, we looked through all the guidance and.
I took a webinar.
So did I twice.
Yeah. So the the biggest thing I can tell you is. There was a lot of questions about. Some of these expenditures until they came up with.
They made a change.
They made this last change in the last. The last ruling. They made this final change and said. If you spend spending on government services. Recipients can use the ARC funds on government services. Up to the revenue loss amount that they're granted. Whether that be the standard allowance amount or the amount calculated. So the standard allowance amount for us. If it's under ten million, ours would be the seven ninety-eight. That's the standard allowance. Well, you know, calculated using the above approach, the above approach is a couple of ten million. Government services generally include any service traditionally provided by a government. Unless treasury has stated otherwise. Common examples. Although this is not exhaustive. Construction of schools and hospitals, road building and maintenance. And other infrastructure, health services. General government administration, staffing and administrative facilities. Environmental remediation. Provision of police, fire and other public safety services, including purchase of fire trucks, police vehicles. And other equipment. And government services are the most flexible eligible use category under the S F O R F program. And funds are subject to be to be streamlined reporting compliance requirements and the streamlined reporting requirements. Recipient should be mindful of the certain restrictions, which are detailed further restrictions. On new section and apply to all uses of funds applied to government services as well. So. Some of those restrictions. The police car and the police officer, we have to show why. Why? Why do we need to spend our money on that? So what I did is I went back and went to Verna and took. Remember me explaining to you a couple of meetings about how many? The growth factor was and the growth factor that occurred during COVID. There it is, right there. So when the growth factor occurred during COVID. There was a factor that impacted, we can, we can say, we can draw the line. It says, spend impacted municipal services. Impacted more traffic, impacted community services. One of the ways, one of the ways that we want to offset that. Is hiring an additional police officer. And getting him a cast. This isn't new to Los North Barwick. He's using the money to fund a police officer as well. I actually know. So in Harrison, we use it to fund a second patrol deputy. We only had one deputy sheriff, forty hours a week for getting a second. We already got it. We got a second one. So other places have already done that. So of course, the kicker is next year we have one of ourself paid for, which is mine. But it relieves us the burden this year. So we've read, you know. I I don't know if it helps. Your, you know, put it to rest, but. We certainly have have scoured over this with a fine tooth comb, made sure that it meets all the straight face tasks, and I'm confident it does. But I wish I could tell you that there's someplace I could send this to get looked at.
Yeah.
There is. We're all on our own. Everything is on their own.
I'm not doubting the word.
No, no, I know.
And and all the rest of it.
Oh, I know.
One, one program that came up was the. Farm and ranch land. Protection program.
Yeah.
And all the politicians got there and they did their huzzas and it's going to be great and all the rest of the stuff. And then when it came time to applying to those funds. You felt like a piece of boiled spaghetti had jumped through so many holes to not get it.
Right.
And, uh, so like the, the politicians in Washington got the bump of the public relations. But they also didn't have to fund it because no one could qualify.
They gave us fifty percent of the money without even knowing anything about what we were going to do with it.
So that, that's the other question I was going to ask. So this is not simply an application to get money.
No.
We, we've been granted the money.
Correct.
Then we have to justify it.
Correct.
Okay. Uh, and then when's the other half?
It will be in September, October.
And, and so by that time we'll be seeing the other performance of other communities who are also probably going to be pulling the same wanderlust together or something similar to it. Let's see if it's. It broke that.
We're going to be okay.
Okay, thank you.
So one of the things that I, I want to highlight responding to public health emergency, it says in the annual COVID nineteen mitigation prevention, when you read out through that. Public communication efforts, um, medical PPE and protective supplies, the air packs. Uh, public communications efforts, police radios, uh, technical assistance on, on law enforcement. Public services, public health, the body cameras, the portable radios. We've gone down through the whole thing. Then when you continue on, uh, law enforcement officers and community experience increased. Basically increased, uh, services due to the pandemic, law enforcement officers focused on advancing community policing. So we just heard about that. So I, I think we've done a good job. I will continue to look for other, you know, other answers and uh, but I, I feel comfortable that we, we hit this right and it will help, our plan will help balance the budget.
Yeah, agreed. Any other questions?
No questions.
All right. Um, so we can go ahead and, um, report the motion on this, um, how we would be worthwhile for us to go through this in detail, correct?
You can just make the motion for the, I mean, this is going to become part of the public record anyway. So in the meeting, so I would just, you can do it individually, you know, one motion and say all the, you know, say what each round is, or you could just say the seven ninety-eight, eighty for the submitted data for the, for the funding.
Yes, supporting docs anyway, so.
Yeah.
Uh, based on that, I'll, I'll, I'll move to, um, accept proposal is as mentioned tonight and as shown, it's supporting documents, uh, for tonight's meeting, uh, for the ARPA funded expenditures and the amount of, uh, totaling seven hundred ninety-eight thousand eight hundred eighty dollars.
Motion in a second and the discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Thank you very much.
Motion passes four zero. Right. Given that, we can, um, move back up on the agenda now, um, and we can begin our, uh, annual bond fund meeting. Um, the first step is that we need to elect a chair and a treasurer. Um, and if I can make a suggestion for this, that we may, I think currently Jack, you're the chair and I'm the treasurer. Um, my suggestion is that we stick with you and I being the two, just because there's a lot of administrative stuff that needs to happen to change this over, um.
Yeah, the, the administrative pieces that we have, uh, quarter point investments that is managing the bulk of the money in the bond fund. And then it would, it would require getting, you know, signatures on those accounts and back and forth and private licenses and things like that. So it's just in a sense to keep it, keep it that way. And start to give some detail on why.
Yeah.
Yeah, I did the team revert last year and it was, um, it was a little painful actually, um, to get them everything that would need and stuff. So, uh, thank you for hearing my comments on that. So get, so given that, I, I wonder, I, I, I'm going to suggest that we just stick with our existing structure, Jack, and, um, I'll motion to elect Jack, I guess, as the chair of the bond fund.
All second.
Motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any votes, no votes?
And I'll, I'll motion to have Mallory put the team with treasurer.
All second.
Thank you. Um, motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Um, all right. So I guess then Jack, I'll let you run the show now.
Uh, we have minutes from March ninth, uh, two thousand twenty-one. Got to throw that out and is there a motion to accept the minutes?
Motion to, um, accept the, sorry, accept the minutes from our bond fund meeting on March ninth, two thousand two, two thousand twenty-one as written.
Second. Uh, sure.
We can, yeah. Just a, correct.
Yeah. Um. Yeah, it, it, it's, um, there's, there's, there's a I think, I don't, I don't believe there's anything that says that you can't vote.
Yeah.
Because you're a president, because you're, you're sitting right now. You're one of the trustees, so
Excellent.
Um, I, I would suggest that you, that you, that you vote. I don't see any reasons to, because the meeting minutes stamp themselves.
About.
Yeah, all's in favor of, uh, of, of accepting our document of minutes of March ninth, two thousand twenty-one, say aye.
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 Minus. The motion passes four zero. There, there is an attachment, um, to that, and I just pointed out that, uh, that we did change the cash portion of, of that back in two thousand fourteen. Uh, changed the basically the policy statement. And that was a reduction from, uh, keeping a hundred thousand dollars in, uh, in liquid holdings, uh, basically that account. That correct, uh, CDs and, you know, that.
Checking, saving, CD and investment. Where?
So, but seventy-five thousand doesn't include the investment fund.
There is some liquid cash in that particular account as well. But to bill to equal to twenty-five thousand.
Okay, okay.
Okay.
And, and then we're like, depending on where the market went today, the last time I checked it, uh, we're three hundred ninety-six thousand. In, uh, in the quarter point investments of, of, by my mill. And I spoke with him, uh, about that, um, and, and anticipating a disbursement. He, he did, um, rebalance those funds. So if there are, there's some cash available to cover uh, what our potential expenditures might be. I believe that those have tormented something like forty thousand dollars.
I think for this year, we can spend up to sixteen thousand three hundred fifty-nine dollars and seventy cents. That's correct. Um, but we have total applications totaling about fourteen thousand.
Yeah, the, a little bit of a change because the the amount of appreciation of the fund is seventy percent is based on the account balance December thirty-first.
Yeah.
So it's not, like every other fund, it's gone down since then because of world events exactly. So either way, we're, we're we're under that alone, so.
Do either of you have questions on, on the whole bond fund thing? Did you get a chance to read the thing that's on the supporting notes about kind of what it is?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. Okay. Uh, so this is an annual meeting that we go through, um, and we solicit, solicit applications from the community and how to spend those funds and if that's to decide.
Yeah, that's good. Uh, there, there is something that says the bond trustees, the bond fund trustees, we formally in, in the, in the documents, but we've been meeting on a nascent basis because in the past, there were members of the trustees that were uh, investment savvy and we didn't have an outside consultant, uh, uh, investment advisor. Uh, yeah, it was being done in-house. So it was more appropriate to have the the chair of, of the treasurer, of, of whoever was responsible for those uh, rebalancing the funds and just like to make reports back. But seeing as professional managers, we have, just haven't seen the need to me. So we're doing so not, I'm not actually, but we're not having a meeting, just have a meeting. So that's why. But if any trustees wish to have a meeting. Call it up and we'll schedule it. Okay, so, um, we have, uh, a roster of, of requests. Many from the self-preparation department. Thank you for coming. Thank you, thank you. Uh, so the first one up is, um, self-preparation department requesting three hundred and ninety-eight dollars uh, for, uh, cornhole. And, uh, to be available to, uh, community members and so, um, others, which, which to, uh, who want that.
Do they have any questions there? Any questions on the, on this one?
Let's play with the wall.
Is the intention to have like a cornhole tournament or is it just available for?
So we do have an equipment loan program which includes snowshoes and fishing poles and kayaks right now. So we're looking to add the cornhole, a couple of cornhole games to this loan program, so the phone community having a gathering or want to, you know, looking for some cornhole to be able to come to the rec department and move the bone out of the cornhole for the weekend or, um, you know, however long you'll be there, you know, within a reasonable amount of time. And then we would also use the cornhole, um, games for, you know, events. We'd have them out the Easter egg hunt and, you know, we could have them out at the Halloween. You know, when they stay at powder house, so the ice rink. So, um, it would be for both recreation use in the community.
I'd have a different opponent to play against each other.
Yeah. Christmas party. Um, and one, and one thing too for Jessica, the one fund historically has, specifically in there, like generally like should be used for more like winter recreation type types of things. Uh, but we have in the past kind of strayed from that a little bit. Um, speaking for myself, I think this one is totally fine. It's a, a small amount. I'm happy to, to make the motion and stuff to, so I'll, I'll just go ahead and make a motion. Motion to grant, um, the rec department here ninety-eight dollars for a cornhole from, from the, um, twenty twenty-one bond fund.
Any discussion of motion? I would add one thing to Mallory's comments is Elizabeth Wong stated in, in the will of the grant, uh, that that we should, that the trustee should consider winter recreation, but we're not restricted to that.
Yeah.
So we try and, and do that, uh, but again, if there's something worthy things that's, that's not strictly winter, uh, winter recreation, we, we consider that the best and that. Okay, uh, any, any other discussion on the motion for the, uh, formal thing? Hearing that, all of the favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed, another opposed, that passes, zero. Uh, second item is, is, uh, uh, benches, uh, that'll be by the paved area, tennis court, skating rinks. And that's in the amount of
forty-six hundred.
Forty-six hundred. Yeah, forty-six hundred dollars. Thank you. Worth mentioning about that.
Sure, um, you know, with the, uh, after we paved that, after Jennifer had that area paved, um, at the East Powder House. We saw a lot of activity there for basketball, um, over the summer and fall. And then we've had a lot of activity there with the ice rink this winter. Um, and one of our other requests is some portable pickleball equipment and that was sort of the idea is to have that on the, that side of the open side um, of the paved area. And so just looking to develop the area and we thought it'd be nice to have some seating and some benches that would be used for that, you know, could be used all year round. Um, so nice durable benches similar to the picnic tables that are over there now. Um, and these would be more permanent. You know, they could stay there all year round and they could be used for the ice rink for people to sit on, putting up their seats and just to kind of continue to keep, make the area more inviting, inviting everybody.
I'll go ahead and motion to grant forty-six hundred dollars from the bond fund to the rec department for benches at.
One second.
New discussion.
Question. So, um, I was looking at the minutes and it does show that there is a warming shed that was approved last year. Was, did that not include benches?
That will have a bench that the idea behind that was kind of like a dugout style. We're still working on it. Um, right now, where it's at right now, I'm looking at, um, having Summersworth Trade School might be on one of their projects. Um, and it would be outward, um, right now, it looks like it's going to be September of twenty twenty-three. Um, so that would be set back a little bit from the ice rink. Um, Jay and I have gone over to look at where, you know, where would be a nice spot for it. It would be sort of, um, sort of in line. I'm not sure if Meyer, you are with the area, but where there's a shed right now where we store the ice rink equipment. Kind of be in line, just closer, you know, closer to the rink, kind of in the middle of the paved area. Um, and so it would be like a dugout style, um, you know, covered area with a bench, benches kind of inside. So there would be benches there as well. These benches would be, you know, closer to the skate rink for where the kids would sit to put their skates on. Um, where people could take a break if they're playing pickleball, pickleball or, um, basketball. So it would be in addition to what we're, what we have in progress for September twenty twenty-three, which seems so far away right now.
There's no other discussion, uh, we'll take a vote. All of us in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Can you pause? Another opposed, that passes four zero. Three. Uh, twenty-one hundred and thirty-four dollars. It was, uh, replacement, I believe, of the liner for the ring. Is that correct?
It's actually to expand. We're looking, we do need to replace the liner.
You have another one?
No, this is, so that's included in this. So we do need to replace our liner, just so you have the status on the rank at the moment. Our liner this year, um, is leaking a little bit. We, when we filled it in January, we were lucky enough where it froze within like twenty-four hours. So we didn't lose a ton of water. And then it stayed frozen for a while. Couple of weeks ago during give eradication on that, you know, those warm days we had, we lost too much of water during those days. So now the rink's pretty shallow and, um, even when it's, we just don't, the ice isn't thick enough. And when you weigh out, whether you, you know, add water to it in March, it sort of doesn't really make sense. So we do need new liner desperately. We figured, um, while we're at it, since we have this wonderful paved area, let's look to expand the rink a little bit. So right now it's a forty by eighty and we're looking to expand it to a fifty by one hundred. So we would use the existing, um, the existing frame and we would just be adding on, you know, a couple, um, a couple of extenders on length and a couple of extenders on width and then purchase a liner as well. That would be fifty by eighty or fifty, fifty by a hundred frame.
How, um, just curious for those liners, like it, I would imagine those probably need to be replaced like every couple of years. I've looked at, they're not terribly durable.
We've been lucky enough to get like four to five years out of our liners. So, I mean, we do try to take good care of them. Part of it depends on how well and, you know, how well it works out with the freezing and how the water settles and if you can keep air bubbles out from being underneath it.
Yeah.
Um, but we have, we've been getting about four to five years out of our liners.
Nice.
This one was on its fifth year and we probably went one year too long.
Um, so if it's going, if it's a bigger liner, do you have to add with storage, storage space for it in existing shed?
We do. Yeah, yeah. We do have room to store the liner as well as the additional parts that we would be fitting in the shed. We also, it's amazing. We can fit in there. We have a bambini in there. We have a ice mower and then we added a snow blower in there too last year. So.
Um, I'll go ahead and make a motion. I'm motion to grant two thousand one hundred and thirty-four dollars to the rec department, um, for a new and larger ice rink liner. And expanded frame.
All second.
New discussion. Hearing then, uh, all's in favor of, uh, appropriating the, the money for rate materials. Hearing none, all in favor of appropriating the money for rape materials, say aye.
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 Who's gonna oppose, that passes, four zero. And the score. We have. Self-perpetration department looking for five hundred and fifty dollars for pickleball. Probably an explanation you could on that.
So pickleball seems to be a growing sport these days and it seems like, you know, a fairly easy sport to have. You know, portable. So we would be, but we were trying to think of things we could do on the pavement area that's next to the. Basketball courts and we were thinking pickleball might be a good one. That's, you know, kids are getting into pickleball as well as, you know. Over in York, they have, you know, people, they have a lot of their members in their thirties and forties and then, you know, everybody in Florida is playing pickleball. So. We thought that, you know, it would be a fun sport to try to see if we could drum up some interest in town that would, you know. May interest, you know, variety of ages. So we were looking at a portable net and then some rackets and balls. Tim also had, he shared his experience with pickleball in Harrison and it seemed very positive. So we thought, you know, it had potential to. Be growing yourself.
We had, we had four tennis courts that we made eight pickleball courts. And they, we ended up timing them out. And anybody in front, when we finally told the people, if you actually use the ball. It'll get, it'll go better. Got really poor exciting then. Just kidding.
I drive past the pickleball. Same in York all the time and it is amazing to me. It will be freezing out.
Yeah.
Dark and that place is packed, you know? It's a huge store. It's kind of, it's across with ping pong tennis.
Yes.
It's fun. It's good for all skill levels.
It would just be, would this be? Because it's portable, would this be a, hey, would I like to?
Well, we had thought we would put it out. Well, actually, we thought we would put it out there. You know, we'd have set times maybe between nine and eleven on Tuesday, Thursday mornings and people could go out and play. We also got the names of some instructors, local instructors, if we wanted to try, you know, to create a program where, you know, we've got to have some instruction. That's the ultimate goal to get a program, like a tennis program, also a pickleball program is our ultimate goal. But until we get that part, you know, we can loan or do both, have a loan basis where people just come, they know the courts are open, sign up. We can send them out there.
Motion to grant private taxpayers to the rec department to purchase a portable pickleball set.
Second. Any discussion?
I like it again.
Hearing none, we'll vote, all in favor of the pickleball equipment. Five hundred and fifty dollars, say aye.
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 Opposed. Four zero.
We do have one more. We did have one more for rec. It's in there.
Okay.
Okay, nevermind. Okay.
Yeah. Is there anyone here from the ski team?
So I told Lisa, since rec had so many of them that I would be there and I wouldn't mind speaking on her behalf. So the March would ski team in twenty fourteen, the bond fund helped support purchasing uniforms. Their uniforms are four hundred dollars apiece. And they have about half of them need to be replaced at the moment. There's the team, they, March would ski team tries really hard to be very inclusive where the school. Only funds twelve uniforms and they have about thirty two kids on the team. So, yep, so they. Are, they, you know, need to come up with the funds for the rest of the uniforms. So this year they have fifteen that need to be replaced at four hundred dollars a pop. So. They were looking for six thousand dollars to help them to supplement the purchase of uniforms.
Motion to grant six thousand dollars from the bond fund to the March would ski team to replace uniforms.
Second. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, we're both, I was in favor of appropriating six thousand dollars. Is it to the high school or to the boosters or what?
It's to the boosters. Yeah, it will be to the boosters.
Okay, to the Russian ski team boosters.
Yeah.
Six thousand dollars. All those in favor of that, say aye.
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 That motion passes.
Yeah.
Thousand thirty two dollars for what? Snowshoes.
So as I mentioned before, we have our snowshoe loan program which. In two thousand ten, the bond fund allowed recre, well enabled recreation to be able to purchase several pairs of snowshoes and over time, that was twelve years ago, the snowshoes get, do get a lot of use. And over time, we've had some that have, the plastic gets broken or cracked. And so we're down to not many, well, I shouldn't say not many, we still have about six adult. Pairs in various sizes. So we're looking to sort of beef up the adult snowshoes. Again, we have plenty of kids, but we're looking for. Some more of the adult ones. So we went through to see, we found some at all being, and we went through and and went through our sizes to see what we were going to kind of fill in the holes. So we're looking for eight pairs of snowshoes.
Motion to grant the rec department one thousand thirty two dollars to purchase snowshoes.
I'll second. Any discussion on that motion? Yeah, this is, this is a good one because I. I really like to hear the things to be.
Yeah. Good thing.
Remember Jerry McPherson, when we did the community center, he said, you know, okay, I want this building. Use it. And that's the entity. So it's really nice to hear that. We're getting the use and replacing. That's good. Is there a motion?
Motion is second.
Yeah, there's no other discussion? All in favor of appropriating or granting a thousand thirty two dollars for snowshoe replacement? Say aye.
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 Motion passes, four zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Alright, um. Fourteen thousand seven hundred and fourteen dollars. I think the firecracker was friendly, you know, good.
Just. Again, what is it?
Fourteen thousand seven hundred and fourteen dollars. You are. We have like sixteen hundred left from our chunk for this year.
Okay. We've, we've done with business from the bond fund, so we'll close the bond fund here. We'll go to town council.
Right, um, this feels, this order feels so strange now we finally get into three minutes. But I think the motion.
Okay, I move to. Approve the town council minutes of February twenty second, two thousand twenty two. Two, 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 two. I'll second.
Motion in a second, any discussion? Discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Four, zero. Signing the treasurer's warrants.
I move to sign the treasurer's warrant, the amount of nine hundred and fifty seven thousand four hundred and eighty dollars and fifty one cents dated March third, two thousand twenty two. Second.
You have a motion in a second, any discussion? I'll just add that this one includes the school payment. It's a larger amount. Alright, all those in favor of signing the treasurer's warrant, say aye.
Aye.
Motion asks for zero. Reports and correspondence, all we have is Christie this evening, right?
Correct.
Public comments, um, hi.
I'm doing it with you.
If you could just state your name and your address.
My name is Lita Galvin, I live in the forty six, Beverly Road in Southport. There was an article that came out in the Portland Post Herald this week about the resignation of the police chief and I had a couple of questions. The first one being that it was referenced in the article, the part of the settlement was a ten thousand dollar law payment to a law firm that was not a law firm retained by the town. I'd really love to know if that was taxpayer funded or if that was coming from insurance, since it was asked and not answered in the article. And also, not sure you can tell me, but was that to somebody else's law firm? I'm assuming it was not ours. That's not the name of the people we hired.
So I think on this topic, you know, we wish the chief the best of luck in his retirement and that's really the extent of what we're willing to say on that.
But I mean, ten thousand dollars is an accounting question in terms of if that was taxpayer money, that's our money that should be accounted for. Obviously, I understand you probably can't comment on the law firm part, but where did that money come from?
It's part of our warrant.
Okay. And I guess my other concern is this, was this the second time in town that the townspeople are finding out about something major due to this particular incident with the chief? From newspapers and not from the town. I went back and looked to see if I maybe I missed something. I didn't see anything announcing or press release announcing retirement on the town page, the police department page. Was there any particular reason why the town wasn't made aware that our police chief actually resigned?
I will, I will say, just speaking for myself, I do think that this was perhaps like a miss on our part. I think we probably should have put it in that, to our webpage, just announcing his retirement. That, that's just my two cents on that.
Yeah, it just, it would have been nice for us to hear it from you guys versus from reporters who are getting it from Freedom of Access Act. So clearly knows something the rest of us don't. It's just, it would foster better communication, I think, between the town and the people that are there.
So I'll take responsibility for that. So when he had resigned and I got the resignation, it was Thursday afternoon, I left for Florida on Friday morning.
Okay.
And I didn't, I was, I got it, put it in, you know, in my desk, submitted it to, where did you go, notified the cops when I left for Florida. So I apologize for that. I'll take the responsibility of that. I'll try to do better in the future.
That would be great, thanks.
Thank you. Anyone on Zoom have any public comments? Go ahead, Abby.
Hi, Abby Sherwood, fifty one, Tamarack Drive. Um, last year, the pedestrian safety committee finished their report and made some. Short term and long term suggestions to the council and to the town manager for implementation. For immediate in improvement on pedestrian safety down downtown. I was happy the chief, chief reger mentioned that tonight, just the amount of traffic and how we're going to increase. Our police presence, but I still want to have that goal achieved of making it safer for people to walk downtown and enjoy our businesses. So one of the things that have been suggested, suggested in that report was to redo the striping. We found and concluded that that would only result in a loss of two to three spaces. The striping was done last year and that implementation was not. Adhere to. And so I wanted to kind of get a, an idea of the timeline of when striping is going to happen this upcoming year. And if we can kind of work backwards on a timeline to make sure. All of our crosswalks are illegal. The, the purpose of that was to increase visibility. You're not supposed to have a crosswalk within twenty feet of a parking space. And so I wanted to kind of start thinking about it now so we can work backwards and try to improve visibility for pedestrians downtown.
Tim, do you guys have an update on the striping process, the next round of it?
It probably, I mean, the striping usually takes place in June.
Typically it's June. Last year, there was a shortage in the reflective paint. I don't know if that's still an issue or not this year.
So it would be June and in the meantime. I'll try to find that report that you're referencing and see if I could take a look at it and see if I put my hands on it. Somewhere in the office and if I can, I'll either reach out to Jen or I'll reach out to you and see if we can get a copy of it or a committee. So I'll take a look at it. That'll be the next step in the process and then I'll see what we can do with it.
It's on our website. I.
Okay, thank you. I'm still. Still new, so work with me.
Don't worry. Thank you.
Was there ever, was there ever a map associated with that report as to where the striping was to take place? But.
I don't, I'm not sure. I have not seen that report.
Abby, do you happen to know, was there a map established?
There was not a map established. The ad hoc committee was charged with working with a certain portion of the downtown. We couldn't, we couldn't work on the issue. For the entire town, so we just focused on just that, that one strip. And what the former manager had said was that a lot of spaces, really only two or three would be, would be lost if it was just completely redone. Rather than just visit every single crosswalk and eliminate the adjacent parking spaces, if we completely redid it. There would be a lot less. Spaces that we would lose from that process.
I'll take a look at it. We'll go now.
Right, any other public comments? Alright, Tommy. We're going all out of order and busy things, you know?
There it is. So obviously highways been busy with winter road maintenance, filling potholes. Roads are now, are still posted. The last two weeks, police department had zero arrests, seven accidents, eighty nine traffic stops. Railroad kind farms was verbalized. Self-per, police officers responded and actively pursued the individuals. They did not. Catch up with them in time before they got out of state. They have been identified with the assistance of Mass two, the state police and the borough police department, I believe. I don't know if they're in custody or. You know.
I don't doubt they're.
They've been identified. Austin Stevens is taking three day class on evidence collection. We've hired a new officer, Jared Maltech. He's already completed phase one of the criminal justice academy and has to face two. There'll be a final test and we may certify. Flight department last two weeks had fourteen calls. Code enforcement issued two permits, did seventeen inspections. Planning is working on ordinance updates, no new projects. Live area had two thousand eighty six items borrowed in February. Paper line airplane competition had twenty one people in attendance. Forty nine people came in to use the computers. Pluxiglass barrier is down. Patrons have been commenting on how they like the change. Seems to be more inviting. Recreation. Powder house has been busy. Gunstar trip on March fourth had ninety seven people in attendance. Still scheduling the AARP tax appointments on Fridays. Signing a new class, mom and taught our classes on Tuesday mornings. Sixty five seniors took advantage of the exercising classes and games such as bridge, privilege and chess. Assessing the pound and what has been sent out, personal property taxpayers. The annual declaration of visiting homes that had permanent activity in the last year. Preparing for launching G I S online, least bring early some. Program. Finance sent out the reminders for media tax payments due March thirty first. Finance and the clerk's office been busy posting all the payments coming in. Transfer station, transfer station roof has failed. And it, it, we just, we brought to our attention, it will not last the summer. So we need to put a roof on, so we. Went out to contract it for that, got a bid back, the, we're going to replace it with metal roof. And, and now you're looking at me like, Jen, did this just happen? No, this is not just happened. This has been a roof problem, it's been going on. The years, apparently nobody paid attention to. And now it's, it's so rotted that we just, it's leaking and it's just coming, the shingles are peeling right off the back, they're boiling right off the back. What's that?
The shingles are falling apart.
Yeah, the shingles virtually.
So it's a, it's a shingle job and. What about underneath? Is it structural?
The, the structural's intact, but the, the structural isn't. So they're gonna have to replace some plywood that's, they've been enclosed for a while. So with that, the whole project is going to be about a little thousand two hundred. We're going to take out our capital funds. We can't wait. We're gonna get it. So we got it on the schedule. It'll be sometime, when do you think, Jen, when do they?
We're on the schedule. I told them we can't have rush. There was snow up there at the time, you know, we did it, so.
But, but it wasn't going to make the summer. It's just that, we went out and when I went out to the tour, I looked at the roof and. I was like, oh my God, what's going on? Like, we've been telling people for. Like, we've been telling people for the last three, four, five years and.
It's a nineteen eighty-one building.
Yeah, so it's probably the original roof, so anyway, that's in there. Grabbin, uh, budget, obviously, as you know, we presented that. Uh, you know, the work's scheduled for Tuesday, March fifteenth. Moving forward with great works internet, uh, getting better fast service, lots of money for the phone systems. It's gonna take four to six months before all the fiber is up and running, you're gonna connect, wanna elaborate, where they're gonna connect fiber.
Yes, we have fiber here um, and going by the police station, so we will have to get it to the community center, get it to the fire station, that same building, and also get it into highway. Um, so there's some timing for them working with C and P to get all the holes and to get the fiber up and running. So depending how quickly they work together, um, we could be up and running at this building sooner than the others, but they're gonna try and space everything in as soon as they can. Our contract is up with consolidated communications.
Um, pedestrian lights in front of town hall, town hall and post office are old and failing, the patch are extremely hard to find and try and come up with a. An affordable solution one way or the other, that's not a Band-Aid, that's not going to cost us more money. Uh, I've been working with the fire chief and working on um, helping him and the fire department get specs together for the quote, for the new fire truck. Had a great conversation with Phil Saucer about our sidewalks, they finished that piece of it, we're right on, we're right on target. So in a nutshell, Phil's, you know, I, I, as I said, I said, they'll just stay lost and we're gonna clean all sidewalks, that's impractical. Basically twenty miles of sidewalk, we don't have the staffing and the equipment. It costs us, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars. So Phil said, and he had done the research, talked to some other communities as well. So he said, you know, there's two parts of this, there's that law, but there's also a law in the books that says we have immunity from people using our parking lots, our sidewalks, our streets are. So that whether they're slippery or not. But explained to Phil what the plan was going forward, that we're gonna target the Agamemnon's developments area, places where the, we'll work at the schools, places where the kids get picked up. Those will get targeted, get done, downtown district for some of those, and that's what we can do next year with a sidewalk machine and another employee. That being said, Phil said that that's a great plan, that's what all the towns are doing, eating it in small increment chunks. Um, and he said every, even if there was a lawsuit brought against us, that the judge would be happy with the fact to know that we are trying to mitigate the problem. Make a difference, we just can't do it all at once because of cost restrictions. So that was a good answer there. Um. We're going to, I've already started working on the uh, hiring replacement process for the new police chief. Hiring replacement process for the new fire chief and hiring replacement process will be quotas. Um, safety trainings will start this month, I'll be conducting those, I'll be instructing those, because I'm an instructor for that, so all we do is that, saving the town some money. And we're continuing to work on an employee recognition program, trying to get something in place. That's my report, any questions?
No.
Right, thank you.
Thank you. Right, unfinished business number one, medical marijuana caregiver licensing, um, feeling a broken record, but I think that the update here, so that the planning board is chugging along on ordinance development. Um, and the same update applies for administration number two, um, where is, still working on that stuff and when we have an update from them, we'll certainly discuss it in our council meeting. Um, new business number one, we are, we took care of, so we're on to council member comments.
I, this is more for Barbara, actually, just a question, have all of our planning board appointees been sworn in and our official name? Okay, great, um, just, uh, I think in, in response to comments with um. All the work the planning board is doing, um, watching those meetings and seeing. The input that, that everybody's, it's uh, it's nice to see, it's not easy topics and there's a lot of, a lot of input. And I think uh, having um, the last um. Uh, what do you call it? Um, Bill, the, the, the position that he's filling um, will be really good as they start looking at soul and truth. So just, just nice to see that, so that's all, thank you.
Good as well. Um, given that, we have an executive session, so we'll take a motion.
Move to one to executive session. For one M R S A, section four oh five sixty D, discussing the contract.
A second.
A motion in a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
So we'll be turning off uh, the Zoom, we'll be ending the Zoom recording for everybody online. Thank you all.